Change of things.
I know I didn't like that very much.
Yeah.
It missed a whole years, well, it missed a whole years of plans of mine that I had made to try to avoid missing meetings. Yeah. Because we saw the selection up there.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Let's notice who shows up for meetings and who does not.
Appreciate that. All right.
They may have to switch it to the second one, then if everybody else can't think it. So they might have to change it to the second one.
You didn't record that first part, did you? Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to welcome everybody to tonight's City of Dayton Regular City Council Meeting for January fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Ms. Klein, roll call, please.
Member Horton.
Here.
Member Neary.
Here.
Member Neiman. Member Kelly.
Here.
Member Judd.
Here.
Member Lovins.
Here.
City Administrator Fawcett.
Here.
City Attorney Edmondson. Mayor Baker.
Here.
Let's thank everybody for their presence and will you excuse those who are not with us tonight? If everyone would like to please rise and recognize a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you very much for that recognition. Next up on the agenda will be the mayor's report. The first thing I want to do on the mayor's report is welcome. We have two new members on our city council. Terris Horton, welcome to city council.
Thank you.
And Aaron Judd, welcome to city council, sir. So you guys are gonna have a lot of fun, feel a lot of crazy emails, Facebook comments, walk through the grocery store, they'll talk to you about it.
Before, go ahead.
Yeah, but we're excited to have you here and we're excited for your energy into our city and the projects we're working on. So we are welcoming you guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up on my mayor's report is the snow. Man, that was some snow. We got, some people said it was a fifty year event where we got ten, some people say twelve, some people say eight inches, whatever. It was a lot of snow and our Public Works Department over the last week has done nothing but amazing things. They saw it coming in, they got rested up before it came in, then they hit it hard. They worked twenty-four hour shifts. We had people going home for short two-hour naps to get right back on the plows. And I don't think you understand how hard these people work to keep our streets safe and make sure that you can get to your jobs. You can get to what you want to do with your life. So a huge shout out to our Public Works Department and thank you for all you do, Rick and your crew. Yes, sir. Thank you. Next up is the Dayton Heritage Museum presentation. Laura, you have a presentation you'd like to give with Tina, I believe? Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
We would like to just enlighten people to the fact that the Dayton Heritage Museum, while it has been closed for several months, is still a very viable thing here in Dayton. And I'd just like to read a little bit about the history of the museum itself. And then we're going to talk a little bit about some of the history of Dayton. And then Laura's going to do a little bit of a handoff as well. Sometimes all it takes is for someone to invite you to volunteer. That's how I came to be associated with the museum. In October of two thousand and twelve, then-city attorney Jack Fisher asked me if I'd be interested in working with Charlie Tharp and a small band of volunteers on sifting through the enormous collection of documents, materials, and artifacts that Charlie had housed in his real estate and insurance business. For the next year, we met on Thursdays and Saturdays uncovering the rich history of this little town at the bend in the Ohio. People in the community respected Charlie greatly. They trusted their homes and lives to his business acumen. Children knew him as the man who brought the fire truck to school, handed out plastic fire helmets, and told them about how to keep themselves safe in a fire. He knew the town like the back of his hand and everyone in it. In our early work prior to opening the museum, the story of Dayton unfolded in a way I'd never known before. And I was a kid who, right down here, played on a barge after the nineteen sixty-four flood that had gotten lodged up here. So we uncovered so many different things that are part of the history, the rich history of our town. As we worked in this space and once the museum officially opened, people would peer in, bring things to us, sit a while, and tell us stories about some aspect of life in Dayton. The famous incident in seventeen seventy-nine with Colonel Rogers. Two towns, Jamestown and Brooklyn, settled harmoniously side by side. An epic baseball game, the first of its kind to be played by MLB rules west of the Allegheny. Hardworking Germans who saw this place and thought of their homes across the Atlantic. Shipping industries such as rope walks and ports for ships to take on supplies. The sandbar, the beaches, and end-of-the-line streetcars that brought people to amusement parks, boxing rings, and dance halls all figure into this collection. We learned about the people as well. Mrs. Spears, who gave money for a hospital vital to the community. John Wooden, who learned the value of losing and how it would define an illustrious career as one of the winningest coaches in college basketball. The owner of the mansion on the hill, now Dr. John Wirick. But then, Dr. James Taylor and his work to bring people to freedom across the great divide of the Ohio River. I might add that that house is now on the National Historic Register as a very significant place in that history of the Underground Railroad. And people like Lou Brigham, who helped to rescue people in nineteen thirty-seven and swore that the people of Dayton would never have to suffer such devastation again, and spent the next forty years working and funding the flood levy. Countless people have walked these streets, be they famous or just ordinary folks. And like Charlie Tharp, those of us who have had the privilege of calling Dayton home feel a sense of pride surge when we walk through the doors of the museum because we really have quite a collection. It's just a matter of making sure that we preserve it.
Okay.
Want to talk about kind of future plans, kind of where we're at?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Hey, y'all. I'm Laura Muller. I'm also a board member of the museum. We just want to share kind of where we are with the museum and some of the goals, how things are moving along. As many of you know, in October of two thousand and twenty-three, the museum celebrated its ten-year anniversary. At that time, though, it was decided that there was a number of repairs that had been lagging and needed to be addressed. So we felt it best that the museum should actually close temporarily for those repairs to happen. With that, we've actually gotten new windows, roof repairs, new flooring, a wonderful new paint job. Thank you, Joe Neary. And during that time, we also moved all of the collections out of the permanent exhibition space in the front of the building to the back. With that, though, it was a lot of volunteer hours to actually go through the collection that was in the front of the building to actually start to get kind of a handle on what do we have here and what do we want to do with it? So also with those upgrades, and Jared actually just told me that we've had some new upgrades to our technology, which we really need because there's a lot of digitization efforts that we want to happen with the collection because, again, it's kind of like we don't know exactly what we have and we'd like it to actually be more accessible to the people of this community and beyond. So again, with all those changes and updates, I mean, the main goal is for us to actually be able to open the museum again this year and for it to be a continuing welcoming space that people actually, they don't go there one time. We'd like to actually have them come back numerous times and we have a lot of ideas about how to actually revamp our exhibition space to make it an enjoyable space for people to keep returning to. So what we really need to do is we're honing in on our collection strengths to incorporate those into engaging permanent and rotating exhibitions. We'd like to discuss aspects of our collection that engage the community and beyond to be preserved for current interpretation and the future. And like I said, we are working on digitization efforts of how we can actually make more historic home and genealogical records available to the public. Tina has been really wonderful with actually working with an individual at the Kent County Library who might actually be able to help us kind of like really get that rolling. Additionally, with the city's assistance, we've also established a nonprofit, the Dayton Historical Society, and that allows us actually to apply for grant monies for any number of pet projects that we're really interested in. Those are a lot of projects that are kind of some new ideas and actually revisiting older ideas. Those include things like, we would love to have a walking tour, a historic walking tour of the city, that thing that people can engage with on their phones and can really be self-driven. We'd also like to have maybe looking into some historical markers and even events focused on oral histories. I know that that was something that had happened in the past and I know I would love to see that happen again. Histories on the square? Yeah. So I would love to see that happen again. There's just so many opportunities for doing things like lunch and learn and I would really like to actually have more oral history projects while members of this community can actually still tell us these histories. I'd like to have those recorded. Another pet project of mine is I would really like to do a community-focused How to Care for Your Collections, whether that's two-D or three-D pieces, what people can actually do themselves and then when to actually call a professional. With understanding our collection more and actually building out a collection policy, that includes things like an emergency response plan. I know that we've all, over the past years, seen more and more disasters happen and I'd like to make sure that we know how to prepare for that and have that cared for and some of that is just having like a phone tree of who to call and how this stuff can be stored. But in this new, very exciting phase of our board, we need help. And that help means we have, I think we have two seats available on our museum board and we would love other volunteer help to get us to reopening. We have beautiful, new-to-us cases for our artifacts and we need help going through things and getting them there. Like many city boards, we meet once a month and I believe we have like a good set time now. So if you are interested in joining the museum board or doing any kind of volunteer work, please reach out to myself, Tina, or Jared, and we would love to connect. Thank you. Oh, board meeting? Oh, yeah. So because our board meetings, like I was saying, are once a month and they're the second Friday, I think the second Friday of the month again. And I mean, I would love if people were interested even in joining and they weren't sure. Please attend. We're going to meet at the museum. But just reach out to myself, Tina, or Jared with more information. Thank you.
What time are these meetings?
Ten.
Ten AM.
If you'd like, yeah, these are some of the, these are copies, of course, of some of the things that we have. So this is a cottonwood tree that stood at the corner of, the southwest corner of Sixth and McKinney. It actually was more than six feet in diameter. So it was a huge tree. Now, cottonwoods were all over here and in fact, where we're sitting and standing now, this was a forest of cottonwoods. It was just part of the whole, the whole dysphora, I guess it is, diaspora. So anyway, so that's the cottonwood tree. This is an original gas station where Archie's now stands. And that's on the southeast corner of Sixth and McKinney. And you can, actually what you can see in the background there, on the top left, is a tower. That's part of the old city building.
Is that what cut fire?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Did that collapse?
Yep. That's when it was the school, yeah.
That's fascinating.
Come on. We all know this building.
What building is that?
Yeah, yeah. People call it the Burton Building. I call it the Knights of Pithias. When we were redoing some things at the museum, Elmer said there was a big theater in there and the guy who had the carpet business, he actually got rid of this humongous projector that he had there. So we were kind of sad about that.
Was there ever a roller rink in there?
Not that I've ever heard of.
All right, I heard about it, so.
There was the youth, there was the Youth Recreation Center in there on the second floor.
Roller rink we had up by the football field.
Yeah. Yeah, the point. That was Dave and Deb's. And of course, we all know this building. This was originally the bank, the Fort Thomas Bellevue Bank, which had actually originally been the Bank of Dayton. It was on, well, you know where it is. And then at Sixth and Dayton Streets was the State Bank. And the owner of the State Bank was also the owner of Tacoma, Mr. Lunsford. I should say the president of the State Bank. And then there is one of our favorite adopted sons, John Wooden, who came back to Dayton and was given an award. He did actually say that everything he learned about basketball, he learned in his first two seasons in Dayton, Kentucky, where the first season was a losing season and the second season was the first of many, many winning seasons. And those who went to high school in Dayton know that this is the nineteen sixty-six championship team, the state champion team. And that's all we have. We have many, many more things, so please come and visit us when we open again. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Always, always, Tina. Thank you so much for your really, really well-written, enjoyable history of our city. You're the best. And Laura, thank you so much for your work on the board. You guys are amazing. That's probably, I'm not going to lie, that's probably the most fun we're going to have tonight. Everything else is going to be boring and legislation. So moving right along, we have approval of the minutes for last month.
So moved. So moved.
Member Neary has made the motion to move. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Member Lovins has made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any names? Any abstentions?
Abstain.
You have to abstain.
Stain.
All right, so we have two abstentions.
Because you weren't here.
Still passes, right?
Yes, those abstentions go with the majority.
All right, cool. So those members abstain, I imagine, because they weren't here and they weren't on council at that time. So understood. Next up would be, we're going to open up the podium to the public comments regarding any type of legislative items that are on tonight's agenda. So if you would like to speak to council administration on anything that's on tonight's agenda, the podium is yours. All right, we're going to go ahead and close that here. I don't see anybody rushing out to the stage. So the first ordinance is second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash two-two. Ms. Klein, please.
An ordinance granting a franchise to Duke Energy Kentucky Incorporated to operate an electric and natural gas distribution system within the territorial limits of the city of Dayton, Kentucky, and authorizing and directing the mayor of the city to execute a franchise agreement between the city and Duke Energy Kentucky Incorporated for the operation of an electric and natural gas distribution system within the city.
So the city allows utilities like Duke and Cincinnati Bell to use our streets and sidewalks, their poles and their equipment. And so to allow them to do that, we entered into a franchise agreement with them. This is something the Kentucky Constitution requires us to have writing and that lasts only twenty years. It has to be renewed after a twenty-year period. And this franchise with Duke has expired, so we are renewing the franchise to allow them to continue to provide gas, electric service in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Fawcett, for your explanation of the ordinance. Do I have a motion to accept second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two?
So moved.
Member Neary's made the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Remember, Charlie's made the second. Which opens up the floor for any discussion. Discuss this ordinance.
Does this mean it's an exclusive agreement with just?
It's not exclusive, so everybody else could do it, but honestly, they, the ones that hold the equipment. Here's the same thing with the telephone franchise. We have like a charter. We just did one with Cincinnati Bell, so not exclusive, so they both can compete and use the poles and city streets equally.
Thank you.
Excuse me, will this have anything to do with the Cincinnati Bell and the telephone charter?
What's that?
Will this have anything to do with like Cincinnati Bells or the charters? Do you do anything with Cincinnati Bell?
So Char Communications is a cable company. They provide internet and cable TV. Cincinnati Bell, it's out of the fiber, is the same thing. They both use poles and have equipment in the city. So they both have the franchise in the city as well. Does that make sense?
My question is, will this agreement have anything to do with the telecommunications agreement?
No.
Okay.
That's the, that's the ones that do the cable TV.
Yes, okay.
They're the ones, the, that's a little more complicated. We'll talk about that probably next month when we have the reading for charter. But there is a fee that goes to the state and we get a portion of that fee back. And in the past, we have not used Char Communications to televise because it basically costs about forty thousand dollars a year. And so we don't, it's council that made decision fans not to do that. So we talked about it a couple of times and we recently, commission recently, our council recently asked me to look into it again. I sent an email out about it explaining that it would be forty thousand dollars.
Thank you. That was the reason for I asked them the question. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll probably talk about it more probably next month.
Thank you, Member Horton. Any other discussion? We had a motion by a member Neary, a second by a member Kelly. We've had discussion. We're going to go close discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Next up on the dock, it would be Order Resolution two zero two-five dash one Romeo, the first, the first one of the year. Exciting. Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the mayor to execute contracts with property owners on Grant Park Drive and to accept a declaration of easements from one property owner for the purpose of making public improvements at these properties for the purpose of collecting and directing stormwater and groundwater from these properties into the public stormwater system on Grant Park Drive.
So this is a follow-up to an order resolution we had last month. Last month, we had an order resolution with SD one to participate in the cost sharing program with them. This is a project we've been working on for a couple of years in, on the Grant Park Drive area. We have a lot of water that still permeates underground, coming from subpumps from some of the houses as well as groundwater coming down the hills and there are natural springs in there. This was a spring from Lake at one time. So for whatever reason, the developer did not tie the subpumps into the public water system until late in the development. So what we were doing is going through this test project that we're doing, we're tying in three different subpumps from houses on that street into the public stormwater sewer. Then the reason we need to do this is because that water is destroying the street there. It's undermining the unplacement of the street and this will, we hope, will help restore the condition of that street so we don't have any major issues like we've had there in the past. So these are agreements with the actual property owners to allow us to tie in their subpumps and to grant us the right to go on their property and put pipes in through their property and into the public water system. So there are four different agreements, property owners, that we are authorizing now. And three of these property owners will be contributing twenty-five hundred dollars towards the project because we're benefiting their property and it's all private property. So that's what this is about.
It's a great explanation, Jay. Thank you very much. That is Order Resolution two zero two-five dash one Romeo. Do I have a motion to accept two zero two-five dash one Romeo?
So moved.
Member Judd? Man, just jump on the seat.
I'll second.
Second by a member Neary, which opens up for discussion.
The other thing I had noticed when I was reading through these contracts and the other, the only dates that are mentioned are, you know, like as far as for folks to pay their twenty-five hundred dollars. And I just wondered, because, you know, this is like a pilot program, should we have some dates in there for when this program's going to, the pilot's going to start and end?
It's going to be based on whether we can get SD one to continue to redo this. So the twenty-five hundred bucks is being paid over three years?
Right.
Okay. But I think at this point, we just want to make sure it works.
Okay.
And then we're going to look at other, this is the worst area, so we found there are a few other, one other is pretty bad.
Right.
I imagine, I think since SD one did it once, we'll probably get an opportunity to do it again and we'll look at that in the future. But I'm not sure if I answered the question.
I don't, well, not quite. So I guess, you know, especially for the resident that's, you know, given an easement to the city, you know, for this. You know, say it doesn't work, then would we need to come up with, you know, then enter into another agreement with them to, you know, negate the easement that they've given us? Or if it is workable, does that mean that we need to have something to create this easement to last longer than through the pilot project?
Only one property has the easement because on the, I guess it's the north side of the street, there are very little rideways. And so we have to go onto this property and that's why the easement's, we're going to go pipe in there, so we're going to need to have an easement there anyway.
Okay.
We will never release that easement because we'd have to get there and repair the pipe in the future, so that's why the easement's here. On the other side, the right away goes into the front yards and so we don't have to get easements from those property owners because we have that, that's the city right away. So does that help you answer the question?
Yeah, it does.
Since this involves easements, was this reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Group that we have?
This is a private matter. The only thing planning and zoning considers is zone changes, appeals of administrator's decisions, and state one development plans and when there's a new development. So this would not appear to be planning and zoning commission.
Thank you.
And I believe that with, when this was put in, I don't think that was a requirement from planning and zoning to have it tapped into the stormwater main. But with our update to planning and zoning a few months ago, we did include that in there for future developments.
Thank you.
Hindsight's always twenty-twenty, right?
Yeah.
All right, we've had some discussion. Is there any more discussion regarding? All right, the motion's been made by a member Judd, a second by a member Neary. We've had discussion. Roll call, please.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
The eyes have it unanimously. So be it. Next up, last up, Order Resolution two zero two-five dash two Romeo, the second resolution of twenty twenty-five year. Ms. Klein, please.
An order resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator An order resolution authorizing the mayor and the city administrator to execute a professional services agreement with Mike Jaeger and Compass Infrastructure Group LLC to provide professional engineering services to the city of Dayton, Kentucky.
As you all know, Mike Jaeger's been our city engineer for, I think, three, maybe close to four years now. He left, uh, Prime E and joined a new, um, engineering firm called Compass Infrastructure. So we, uh, decided to do a rebidding for an RFP or an RFQ, excuse me, question for qualifications for our city engineering services. Uh, Mike's new firm submitted the only bid. I'm not surprised. Mike is probably the most experienced municipal, engineering, um, expert in Northern Kentucky. He, uh, he used to be an engineer with Kentucky Highway Department. Dad is, is the chief engineer of District Six, and he's had years' experience. I worked with Mike, uh, in Covington. He was the city engineer there. So we're really happy with Mike's services and we're glad that they submitted it. And, uh, we would recommend that we would, uh, enter a contract with, uh, Compass and Mike will be running their Northern Kentucky office here.
Thank you, Mr. Foss. Do I have a motion to accept Order Resolution two zero two five dash two Romeo?
I'll make a motion to accept, um, Resolution two zero two five dash two R.
The motion was made by a member Kelly. Do I have a second?
No, second.
Second by a member, and by a member Horton. Which opens up for discussion. So anybody like to discuss this resolution?
I'm familiar with Mike in Covington and just generally want to know what would his role be in Dayton? Just as a new member, want to know kind of what will he be doing?
Guess a little later.
I, I'm familiar with Mike, uh, in Covington, is working Covington, but being new to Dayton and being new to this council, what would his role be?
Okay. So this firm, for instance, I'm gonna talk about this a little bit. We work on Compass, uh, actually faces of that, the walking trail along the river. Uh, he designed that, uh, he did all the engineering for that. Uh, he will, uh, is instructed, he will oversee construction. Uh, for instance, this project over in Grant Park, he did all the engineering, uh, and designing for that project. Uh, he, his company oversaw the construction. He didn't design the, the ramp here, the connector road that Barry went, his firm oversaw that. Um, he also does all our grants that we submit to the Ohio, Kentucky, Indiana Regional Government, Regional Council Government, uh, which is where we get our federal funds for our projects. He will submit those applications, uh, answer any engineering issues we have. Ray and I were looking at a landslide issue over on, um, LinkedIn the other day, and, uh, he's gonna help us try to figure out a solution for that. So that's an example of stuff he does.
Awesome.
And it's all looking how early they, as needed.
All right. So, uh, just a couple of quick questions here that I'd, um, kind of like on the record here. So when it comes to RFPs or RFQs in this case, um, can you explain just a little bit about how we advertise for those?
Yeah. So this one's unique because it's for engineering services and what they call an RPA, which allows the engineer to do state projects and state funding. So it requires us to advertise that for 28 days, uh, which we did. Uh, most of the time, engineering, uh, RFQs, RFPs are between seven and 21 days. So that's all state law. That's why we did that. So we don't have to, uh, do RFQs all the time. But in this case, by doing RFQ, we're able to use this engineering firm for everything instead of doing every time we have a project. So that's why we went this route with the RFQ, uh, so we don't need a, you know, big, high-end engineering project. We just have one year doing all those projects.
Thank you. And then, um, in regards to the fact that we only had one bid that was submitted, um, I, you did your own due diligence on pricing of the contract as well?
I have. So basically, uh, this price is only $5 or more an hour than the previous one, which is three years old. So it's, it's, um, enough with three years ago. So that's pretty good. But, uh, I also checked with, um, Cressy Hills, Elmer, and W, who also use them. It's the same price that they are getting as well.
Perfect. Thank you, Jay.
Excellent question. I love this. We're still open for conversation regarding 2025 dash two Romeo. Anybody? Anyone? All right. We're gonna go ahead and close it out. So we've had, uh, a motion by a member Kelly, a second by a member Horton. We've had conversations. Roll call, please.
Member Judd.
Aye.
Member Lovins.
Aye.
Member Horton.
Aye.
Member Neary.
Aye.
Member Kelly.
Aye.
The eyes have it. Moving right along, next on the docket would be the department director's monthly reports. All right. You know, I know he's had a big month, so we're gonna go ahead and let him, uh, get up and get out. Uh, Mr. Lucas. Start casting. I know he's usually late.
I'm gonna be quick. As yeah, we were busy for the last four or five days. We went through probably about 75 tons of salt.
Wow.
And I've already replaced it between yesterday and today. So we're full on salt. Couple of areas that need, like up at Grant Park where they called and said they need their roads wiped. Maybe we can put up something up there for on snow emergencies where they actually have to park in their driveway instead of out on the street. Cause if cars are on each side of the street, I mean, it's down to one lane now. The Jay did send them an email and they moved all the cars, but I think three. So that can be an issue on snow emergencies. And, um, other than that, I mean, we're busy. We got two trucks down. Uh, the bucket truck went down today. I mean, it just won't start. Uh, they think it's, uh, the, um, plugs in the, um, where it heats the engine or to start glow plugs. The dump truck, it's in the shop already. They said they'll get to it next week. But we still got three plow trucks. So we'll be all right. What's that?
The coal miner.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. And our heat went out. So I got orange skies up there. I got one heater running. The other one, they'll be back tomorrow. Yeah, it's been, it's been a little rough up there. A little cold. And tonight, if you get a chance, ride up Dayton Pike and check out that light.
So I'm gonna talk about that in my report.
Yeah.
Looks good.
It looks good, don't it?
That's the type I was talking about, yeah.
Right. Okay.
I'm gonna do this in my report. I'll see you now. I'm gonna do today. They're putting in eight more lights just like that.
All the way up, okay. That light shows up the whole walking trail and everything.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Once the lights go up, it'll go all the way from the bottom of Dayton Pike at seven, up past, um, Chateau Ridge, the next light as you're making the turn. So I think it's either eight or nine lights will be replaced with the LEDs, which actually will save us money because the new technology doesn't use as much.
Right.
So it's a win-win. And if, but you're right. And there're not a lot of residents there. It's almost gonna affect those residents with the lights, so.
Yep. Uh, other than that, has anybody got any questions?
I'd like to say thank you for everything that you've done. I mean, that's a really great job what you've done. And as a new member, I just want to let you know that, um, if, when people come to members, uh, in the community and they complain about what we're doing, I want you to know that we have your back. I know everybody that I've talked to up here, we have your back. And I want you to personally know that I have your back to know that you guys worked your butts off and we're gonna have your backs out.
I mean, we don't treat anybody bad. I mean, we do everything we possibly can to get everybody around, but don't always work out. We don't have the street, the width in the street and the off-street, off-street parking and all that when it comes to these big snows and things. But, um, no, that's great. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Have a good evening. All right. I'm sorry, Ms., uh, Patterson. Usually we do ladies first. No, yeah, you're up now. Code enforcement.
All right. Welcome to the new, uh, members.
Thank you.
Want you to know if you have any questions or anything, uh, my email, my email is always working. I have my phone number. Just give me a call. Um, so I did, um, I have, you have my report for the month. It's, it's slim, but there's a lot of stuff going on right now, um, with it being the holidays and the weather and things like that, that comes into play. Um, there's also a lot of end of year stuff that we do at the office. Angie and I meet and Kristen and get everything together for, um, the end of the year stuff. But, um, you'll find a packet that I left on each, um, person's spot there. We are going into our second year of the residential rental property inspection program. That's it. Um, so what we have found, I got with Bill today, we found that, you know, landlords and tenants are benefiting from this rental inspection, um, program. Um, it was implemented two years ago. The proactive rental inspection program has improved the quality of rental housing in the city while also protecting tenants' health and wellbeing. Um, in addition to this program, it's also proven to protect landlords from issues they may not know they have because some landlords just, they don't go to their property. So we like to have like a representative from, you know, the landlord, the property manager, a tenant. Then they're getting a letter from us saying this is what needs to be fixed, or we found a leak, or we found before the whole ceiling's caving in from that little tiny leak that started last year. Um, so, um, we just think that it's, you know, making the city better. Um, it helps to stabilize the community by providing safe and stable rental properties. We don't see as much turnover. You know, we have a lot of landlords saying, you know, somebody would come for two months and they leave and then we get somebody else for two months. But I think people are feeling safe in their, in their units because we're coming in, we're checking, make sure they have smoke detectors. We're making sure nothing's leaking. The windows are working. Um, so I think it's, it's, it's a great, um, it's a great program and it's working very well. Um, I do know that the complaint inspections have gone way down. You know, it used to be we would get, and this is kind of what geared this whole program, is we were getting so many complaint inspections and a lot of these tenants were afraid to call. Um, you know, they were afraid the, the landlord would automatically evict them. So this way, they're not making the call. They can still make the call if they have a problem and their landlord won't respond. But I think most of the landlords have figured out that, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna make sure that our tenants are safe and have a nice, safe place to live. So, um, on the second page, it kind of breaks down the history of the rental inspections. Um, total rental properties are 1,608. Um, Bill has inspected as of January 14th, 1,586. There's 22 units that are still, um, to be inspected. Now, keep in mind, some of those are properties that are being, um, updated, worked on, they're vacant, they haven't, you know, they're, they're just selling, things like that. Um, we had 1,216 that passed, 349 with minor deficiencies and 21 that have failed. So that's pretty good. Um, now next year, we'll start all over in June and we'll, um, see where we are next year with this. So, yeah.
I can, I can say, I've looked at the programs in Northern Kentucky, and I, we have the most comprehensive and the most effective program in any city, Northern Kentucky. No one checks every property like we do.
Right.
So.
Right.
Some collect the fee, they don't do much with it. They're just complaint driven.
Mm-hmm.
The R's proactive, but we're actively going out and checking every single, you know, property, residential property in the city. And it's a, it's a big lift, but, uh, we've got a great inspector, Bill, and Cass has done a great job running the program. I'm really happy with where we are for the first year.
Mm-hmm.
Period. So.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Yep. And about, I'd also like to kind of give like a little bit of credit to the police department. We do have, um, a couple of issues in the city with problem properties and we're kind of working together with that and moving that along. So we've been kind of kicking that up in high gear. Or before, we were a little bit more lenient, but now that it's just, just doing this rental inspection, just getting the information that we never had. Um, you know, the police department will call me and say, hey, what's the phone number for the landlord at so-and-so's place? And we have it. It's right there. They can call me two o'clock in the morning or six in the morning and we have access to it. So it's really a nice, kind of a well-rounded plan.
And I, I know a lot of the neighbors are happy to see some of these properties updated, let's say.
Mm-hmm.
Or taken care of better.
Yeah.
I have a question. Out of the 349 with minor deficiencies, how many are like multiple offenses? How many like landlords have like several properties that are, that are violating?
Oh, gosh.
Is that just a general question?
It's a good question. Um, we do have several landlords who own multiple properties, um, that have been problems in the past. Um, I would say I could probably get a real true answer for you tomorrow.
Okay, cool, cool. I just.
But just a guesstimate, I would say maybe 10% of that 349, I would say. But I'll, I'll get with you tomorrow and look, you know, dive deeper into it and see. Yep. Any questions?
You have any questions for Ms. Patterson?
Well, thank you.
Great job.
And like I said, my phone's always on and my email's always working. So anytime you have questions, just reach out. Thanks.
Yes. You're the best. Chief Schaefer. Please, uh, give us your report for the fire department this month. I'm sure you've been busy.
Busy, steady. We were, uh, yeah, the snow was interesting. We brought in extra people to help get people in and out squad and make things a little safer on that end. Um, aside from my report I submitted, I would like to bring up, we did have two of our paramedics or squad crew receiving an award from St. Elizabeth. Um, stroke is one of the true emergencies where time truly matters. And our squad crew had the second fastest time in St. Elizabeth healthcare system. And 29 minutes from the time they got the call till they got their thrombolytics and saved the patient. So that was pretty impressive. So that was Corey Pelley and John Patullo, or Patullo. Um, aside from that, just a reminder, uh, the snow, if you're out shoveling, it really would be advantageous if you could shovel around any hydrant you may have in your property. It really helps us out a lot if we ever would have to use one. But that's all I have. If there's no questions.
Any questions for Chief Schaefer?
Thank you.
Excellent point about shoveling around those hydrants you got on your front yard. A lot of us do. Oh, and your presentations. Chief Hatfield.
podium, sir. Okay, uh, y'all have my report, uh, for the month. I don't know if anybody has any questions with that. Uh, other than that, just have a couple of announcements. Uh, we're sad to post that, uh, Tessa, who was one of our canines, uh, canine dogs, uh, about three years ago, um, she did have some complications while she was here, um, cancerous spots and stuff like that. So, uh, she had to be put down. So Officer Marksberry had to put her down. So we just want to give a shout out. She did a great job technically. She is a member of the Dayton Police Department and she was, uh, she's no longer with us. So we just want to give a shout out to Gil that we're thinking of him and, you know, sorry to hear about Tessa. Uh, on the other side of bad news, um, we got a two weeks notice from, uh, Mallory Kabala. Um, and not that we can do much about it. She's been doing a long distance relationship for a long time, two years since she's been here. Uh, she's getting married in October and the long distance relationship is obviously hard on a relationship. So, uh, she is moving away from, from the Dayton area where she grew up and she will be moving back down to Richmond where we originally snagged her up. So, uh, brought her up here and now she's headed back down. Uh, so we're gonna miss Mallory. She was a valuable asset to the team. She learned a lot, uh, while she was here, uh, just in that short amount of time. You know, she got a lot of experience that she will be sharing, uh, possibly with the, uh, E K U campus police. That's where she'll be, she'll be headed. In saying so, uh, we have been, we knew this was coming. Uh, so we did, we've been having this process probably since, uh, June. Uh, it's a tedious, long process. It starts with , uh, testing, uh, interviews, uh, suitability screenings, physical tests, drug screens, uh, polygraph tests. And we came to the final conclusion as of, uh, I believe it was last Fri-, it was Friday of last week, we interviewed two finalists and we hired or gave a conditional offer to Caleb Crawford. Um, he is 29 years old. He's got about six years in the military, uh, military police experience, uh, never saw combat or anything like. or anything like that, but he was in the National Guard. And we do have a very good qualified second applicant. If that position ever comes available, you know, we can extend that position to him also. So Caleb's going to be attending the academy at the end of, I think it's March 30th. And since we're going to have a lot of holidays there, he's not going to be able to graduate till September 11th. So he's going to be gone pretty much all spring, spring and summer and a little bit of fall. We're going to be down one, but we worked a whole year, one down, and we were fine before we hired Officer Nacero. So she was an added compliment that helped us out and doing good, but it's always when you get the full staff, something always comes up and, you know, but we were prepared and we got a quick reply with that. So we have a new hire. He'll be with us hopefully for the next five years and then hopefully he'll stay for that time period. The other announcement I wanted to make was Jacob Smith, Officer Smith. He's been with us for two years. He received our Officer of the Year Award. That's given to the, by the supervisors, I concur. Goes with public contact, service, activity, it's a whole totality of, you know, communication with citizens and how well he's done as a police officer. So he was voted as the Officer of the Year. I concurred, so I just want to congratulate him on that accomplishment. That's all I had.
Thank you very much, Chief. Well, Chief Hatfield, our thoughts, our love, our peace is going to Gil and Tessa, Tessa in my living room.
We love our dogs.
Yeah, he's one of our people.
Yep.
And Gil is too. So we're thinking of him and also big congrats to Mallory. Mallory, she did us well and she's moving along to be with her boyfriend, fiance, soon to be husband. So we wish her the best.
Yes.
So you have a great team, sir, and thanks for what you do.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And that concludes tonight's Department Director's reports, which brings us right along to Mr. Fawcett's City Administrator Report. Jay, the floor, cheers.
Yes. To go back a little bit on your comments about the snow, I want to commend Public Works Crew, of course, that's four people, our crew is four peoples, not like we have 25 people like Seattle, I mean, but I want to commend them for their efforts last week in dealing with what was a massive snow event, probably the biggest two-day snowfall in 50 years. I remember last time, you know, stuff like that, I was a senior in high school of '76, '77, and the Ohio River froze over. So, but that's the biggest snow we've had since that time. So this is not a typical snowfall. We had 10 inches in about 24 hours and then three days, three more inches a couple days later, so total 13 inches during the week. So I want to talk a little about what our Public Works Crew do. There's been a lot of comments on social media, some misinformation. I just want to kind of lay out there how this works here. So what our Public Works Crews do is they plow and salt our streets, make them passable and safe for residents and businesses. These guys were out in the streets in their trucks throughout the morning, in the evening, morning. We had two guys work 32 straight hours on that first snowfall. They started at 8:00 AM on Sunday. They pre-treated every street in the city. That means they're applying seal or brine in anticipation of snowfall. The snow started falling around 2:00 PM and our crew operating in separate trucks, each of them, started moving the snow to the streets. Because there have been a lot of comments on social media, I just kind of want to educate a little bit about what our crews do when we have a snow day like that. So the first streets that they tackle are Dayton Pike and Urban Terrace. These are steep streets, they are primary arteries running into the upper part of the city, and they have to be done early because they are probably the most dangerous. They'll also do Sixth Avenue. Technically, that's a state highway, Kentucky 8, and the highway department's supposed to be there, plowing those streets, but they're focusing on 471 interstate highways. And they eventually get to it. So Rick will sometimes, before they get there, have a steam plow that will, because that's the main way out of the city for our emergency vehicles. They're going to the hospital, St. Elizabeth, that's where they'll be going. So those are three bank streets. After that's done, then they take two trucks and do Sixth Avenue up the hill, heading south, and they take two trucks from Sixth Avenue towards the river, and they do all the side streets there. So that's basically the plan of action, correct if I'm wrong, that we take whenever we have a snowfall like that. So the crew's focused primarily on the residential streets and, you know, after they do the tube up the hill, and that's our primary focus because we want to get those streets cleared. Now, we're not going to clear parking spaces of residential streets. One, we don't have the time or resources to do that. And if we did do that, people would be very upset because we're going to be pushing all that snow on their sidewalks that cleaned off, on their driveways cleaned off. So it's residents' responsibility to clear out their driveways and clear out their sidewalks. So remember, rock salt does not work when temperatures drop below a certain level. And sunshine is what is very helpful for rock salt because it activates the components that help melt the snow and ice. Our crews did not remove the snow from curbside parking areas and residential areas. Our focus is mainly on the streets themselves. Within three days, we had streets cleared down to the pavement and every, Rick and I should have ragged around the whole city and every street was down to its pavement. Now, the alleys we can't really get to, but the streets are uncovered and accessible to residents. We do remove parking, we do remove snow from parking spaces on Sixth Avenue in the central business district, and we remove snow from the public parking lots to accommodate the businesses that are there. Some people want us to come, remove snow from the private driveways, we can't do that, or the private parking spaces or the street parking spaces, we cannot do that. We do have elderly folks that need help and we thankfully have a lot of neighbors that are stepping up and helping them out. So if you do have elderly neighbors, please think about them and help them out if you can. There's also some misinformation about the removal of Manhattan Boulevard, which is a city-maintained street. Rick made a single pass going east and west, and then he went and did other streets. That's all he did. We have the H O president here, Terry Huntley, they hired some folks to come in and do sidewalks and streets there. So we can thank them for the beautiful condition of Manhattan Boulevard and the HOA. Thank you for doing that. We only have so much, you know, people and resources to do it ourselves. So we were very appreciative. I'm sure your residents were very appreciative of the work you all did there as well. So overall, crew did a great job. I appreciate it. I just wanted to kind of get this out here so people could understand, you know, the process we have. It's not willy-nilly. We've got a plan, we executed it. It just takes time. There's a lot of snow. I mean, if you went to bed 10 o'clock at night, those guys are working all night long. Every time we have two inches of snow, they're coming through and removing it. That's five trips on your street to get rid of 10 inches of snow. So, you know, it's just a big snow. It's going to happen. When the sun comes out, it's going to help melt it more, but, you know, who knows, money and war coming. So great job, appreciate it. Dayton Pike lights, we talked about that. That's the good news about riverfront companies. We've been waiting for KYTC to finally sign off on it. They told Mike Yeager today to prepare, get them the bid documents for construction of Faces Two and Three. So that makes me think that we are very close to having a final approval of that project and we could get moving soon on constructing it. So that's all I got there.
Thank you very much for your report, Mr. Fawcett. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns for Jay?
Yep. Just one quick one here. First of all, I know they do a great job. I've seen it out there. I just want to second everybody's comments on that. It is a little concerning to me, though, that you mentioned that a couple of people worked 32 hours straight.
Well, they take some cat naps along the way if they, if they have a time. So, yeah, they're not working.
Yeah, it's concerning to me that people are staying up that late and then driving heavy machinery around vehicles and individuals and everything. Yeah, so what I'd like to say is, we'll talk outside of this meeting, but I'd like to suggest some couple ideas to maybe avoid that in the future.
Yeah, when I say 32 hours straight, I shouldn't say they were taking some breaks in between, but it was long. They were getting some sleep, but not eight hours sleep.
Right.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions?
You know, as far as the social media comments, I get it. I think a storm like that especially brings out the best in people and the worst in people. And a lot of people were just looking out their front window at their sidewalk and car that was buried and everything. I've ridden with Rick on the plow. It's not just driving around. You've got a couple of tons of salt behind you, pushing you down the hills and trying to get it up the hills. It's a very dangerous job. I did see a lot of people, especially elderly or disabled people, that said, I can't shovel my sidewalk or get my car out. And other people came to help them, which I thought was wonderful. That's a community there. As far as the us versus them, you're always going to have that. And like I said, riding with Rick a couple of times, I don't know how they do as good a job as they do. And with the weather staying as cold as it is, this snow's not going to go away for a while. It's not going to melt off for a while. So I appreciate more the, I give more credence to the people that help out than the people that complain and do nothing.
100% agree, my friend. Yeah, I've been on Urban Terrace with Rick. It's terrifying. Absolutely terrifying, but he's like, whatever, that's what he does. But, you know, a layman like me gets in there and like Jay's, or I'm sorry, like Joe said, and you got a ton of salt behind you and you're sitting on four somewhat bald tires and you're going down a hill, it's quite interesting. Yeah, I don't know how you guys do it, man. You guys are great, so appreciate all what you all do. I drive a Kia, man. Really? I'd be jamming out. Well, we hope it's behind us and spring is, spring's around the corner, my friend. Well, why do you got to bring down?
See, now you guys are a lot nicer than I am because I think that whole social media was an absolute joke. So I thought maybe at one of our council meetings, we can tell the difference between a snowplow and a snow eater. And we don't have a snow eater. And so on the plow, it can only take the snow right or left, maybe to the middle, but there is nowhere else it can go.
Maybe we should start bringing them up on the big screen and we could address them individually. Kind of like Mean Tweets, like.
And when we go to each block, you're going to that corner.
And we can address each person's concerns.
And then if you shovel your car out and you throw the snow in the street, again, the plow is going to take it right or left, so it's going right back what you just dug out. I just feel like we need to go to the basic for some people. Let me know if we need a diagram.
Next 50-year snow event, I think we should bring them all up on the big screen and we should address them personally and bring them in. I mean, obviously, the city council is open to the public tonight, but nobody showed up to talk about it.
I'm just saying, a snowplow, a snow eater, there's a difference in case people weren't aware. Goes right or left with snow, nowhere else. Back to the basic.
Any other questions for City Administrator?
Can you clarify the issue, please? Since we're talking about snow and cleanup and everything, on the responsibility for cleaning your sidewalks? Because we have so many people and kids that walk businesses, we need a friendly, walking friendly community, and there's a lot of sidewalks that never get addressed because of a fear.
Under the city's ordinances and its sidewalk regulations, the residents are required to clean their own sidewalks. And some of the, I know under local county law, in the old days, they said that if you clean your sidewalks, you could be held liable if someone got hurt. That's what you did negatively, if you didn't clean it. You know, you made it a worse condition than it was before the snow. But courts now tell basically that cities can impose a requirement on people cleaning their sidewalks. So you're technically required to clean your sidewalks with that snow.
Lexington does that. Lexington has an ordinance that if it's over four inches, you must be cleaning.
Within 24 hours, I believe, or 48?
Something like that. If not, they can cite you for basically a blight.
Well, I think the misconception is that you can only get sued if someone falls on your sidewalk when it's snowing. You can do that any, on a sunny day, I can trip on your sidewalk and sue you, and the judge is going to say, well, you tripped. In the winter time, if you didn't do your sidewalk, the judge is going to say, you didn't do anything on your sidewalk? That's on the landlord or property owner. It's just very frustrating when you see some people doing it or people kind of walk in the streets because the street's safer than the sidewalk.
I'm a streetwalker. During the first night of heavy snow, I definitely walked in the middle of the street. But then my neighbor.
Second career, huh?
Like four. But I will say that my neighbor, my neighbor John, John, if you're watching, I doubt he is, but he sent his kids out and John made sure his kid touched every one of our neighbors' sidewalks and up to their door. So that's the kind of neighborhood we live in. That's the kind of people we're raising our kids. Good stuff. Thanks, John. Appreciate you, buddy. Are there any other questions about snow or City Administrator Report? Lawson? All right, I'm going to go ahead and thank you for your report, sir, which opens up the podium for anybody from the audience that would like to speak with anything about whatever they want. Everyone's quiet tonight. Everyone said they were going to show up tonight. All right. So we're going to go ahead and close out audience comments. Next up would be new business. Do we have any new business to address at City Council? We do not. All right. Getting close to the end here. Do we have a reason for executive session, Ms. Klein?
We do. Pursuant to KRS 61.810-1B, deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency, but only when publicity would be likely to affect the value of a specific piece of property to be acquired for public use or sold by a public agency and C, discussion of proposed or pending litigation against or on behalf of the public agency.
All right, so that is a reason for us to go to executive session. Do I have a motion for us to move into executive session?
I'll make the motion.
Member Kelly's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Member Neary's made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in executive session. Y'all, let's sit around for later. You're welcome to do so. Y'all let's sit around for later. You're welcome to do so.
This is Order Resolution 2025-3R. And Order Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract and execute a deed to purchase real estate located at 608 Brooklyn Avenue, Dayton, Kentucky for $3,200, subject to the city obtaining a clean title report for the property payable from the city's economic development fund.
Thank you very much for the reason. I motion to accept order resolution 025-3R.
I'll make the motion to accept resolution 2025-3R.
Member Kelly has made the motion to accept by his second.
I'll second.